Okay, I'd like to welcome-
Everyone, and go ahead and start our meeting. Today is Monday, May 11th, and this is a regular Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids School District. We have a full house tonight, thank you for joining us. Can someone please read the approval of the agenda so we can formally start?
That the Agenda of Monday, May 11th, 2015, Board of Education Meeting be approved to set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Call action.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to go in, recognize our employees for 25, 30, 35, 40, and 45 years of service. Ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay, alright, we're going to go ahead and start with those celebrating 25 years of service with Lori Bruzek from the ELSC. Michael Fritz from Jackson Elementary. Vicki Genkinger from the ELSC. Ann Hachet from Harding Middle School. Pamela Polglaze from Coolidge. Kim Anji from Harding. Cindy Rudish from Johnson Elementary. Susan Serbisek from Nixon. Cindy Smith from Harding. Laverne Wood from the ELSC. We want to announce those who weren't able to join us tonight that have 25 years in. Laverne Burns from Transportation. Tina Boots from Madison. Edward Davis from Jefferson. Christina Eels from Viola Gibson. Diane Franklin from Franklin. Lena Franzman from Rockwell Daycare. Wayne Fritsch from Wilson. Victoria Fritz from Wright. Brad Hines from Arthur. Mike Hopkins from Jefferson. Michael Johnson from Washington. Kevin Carr from the Transition Center. Annette Kenny from Truman. Joan Crum from Taylor. Toby LaCock from Kenwood. Gloria Lake from McKinley. Kimberly Mittelkauf from Kennedy. Michelle Ness from Rockwell Daycare. Lorraine Osborne from Pierce. Kim Overtur from Hiawatha. Barb Pino from Rockwell Daycare. Mary Reed from Transportation. Laura Reed from Wilson. Carrie Rhodes from Transportation. Elizabeth Smith from Transportation. Kim Sparks from Madison. Anne Starry from Transportation. Ruth Taylor from Rockwell Daycare. Melissa Wickham from Metro. Robert Valetto from Jefferson. And Sharon Wilcox from Kennedy. Those are our 25 years of service. Now, we will do our 30 years of service. And we will start with Deborah Becker from Grant. Val Dozel from the ELSC. Christine LaFrenz from Cleveland. Joan Moore from the ELSC. And we have a few that weren't able to be here tonight. Lori Bark from Kennedy. Rebecca Dickinson from Harding. Martin Knake from Harding. Annette Sandkitt from Coolidge. Michael Terry from Truman. And Myron Tomlinson from Kenwood. And those are celebrating 30 years of service. And these folks are celebrating 35 years. Marta Herschner from the ELSC. And Charles Perry from the ELSC. And we have a few that weren't able to be here tonight, I'd like to read those names. Lynn Johnson from Roosevelt. Amy Cole from Franklin. Lori Law from Coolidge. Lynn O'Connor from the ELSC. Mary Roberts Ratchee from Jefferson. And Marilyn Schaefer from Franklin. Those are all 35 years of service for the district. And last but not least, these folks are celebrating 40 years of service with the district. And we have Deborah Aldridge from Kennedy. And we have Matt Dunbar from the ELSC. Congratulations. Thank you to those who are here tonight to celebrate those years of service, and I think I'm now going to turn it over to Jen with the foundation.
On behalf of the foundation, I just wanted to say thank you to all the employees, and I meant to be here right by 5:30, and I couldn't quite make it. But as the school foundation, what we do is we support the gap that exists between education and funding. Sometimes that's in a classroom, sometimes that's in equipment, it's a variety of things, but we're really proud to be a part of that, and we congratulate everybody.
Alright, it's my privilege this evening to recognize our Board of Education. Once a year, the School Board Association during School Board Appreciation Month does a recognition through certificates to Board members across the state. The theme this year is Stand Up For Public Schools Iowa. Given our legislative session dragging on, that seems to be very important that we stand up for public schools. And School Boards Strengthen Public Education. School Board Member Recognition Month, May 2015, for dedicated excellence in leadership in public education and continued service to students of the Cedar Rapids Community School District, honoring the various Board members. We have this certificate. It's one of my privileges as superintendent to be asked to be signed this certificate annually, and it is also signed Jeff Anderson, President of the Iowa Association of School Boards. School Board Service is one of those unpaid public service positions, and School Board Service, as anybody who would tell you that has done it, is a great opportunity to really learn much more about local governance and schools than you probably ever thought you'd want to know. But congratulations and thank you, and your certificate is here. So let's give the Board a round of applause.
Thank you, Dave. I'll speak on behalf of the Board. It's an honor and a privilege for us to serve our community through our Board Service, and we're proud of our students and the work that everyone in our district does, and how remarkable that we have so many teachers celebrating 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of service. I think it speaks a lot about the quality of our district's services and education. So, thank you, we appreciate that. Next, I'm going to turn the soap back over to Dave for a student showcase introduction.
Okay. Today, on the Superintendent's Report, we have three student teams from the district. We'll compete in the, excuse me, National History Day competition in June after earning top scores in the state contest earlier this month. National History Day is an academic enrichment program that helps students learn about historical issues, ideas, people, and events. Congratulations to the national qualifying teams from Kennedy and Washington High Schools and Harding Middle School. The 2015 Iowa APET Index has recognized the top 50 Iowa high schools for providing advanced placement opportunities to Iowa high school students. The top 50 list is compiled by the Bell and Blank Center at the University of Iowa. And if you're not familiar with the Bell and Blank Center, just as an aside, you should familiarize yourself with this center. It is nationally and internationally acclaimed center working to enhance educational opportunities for the gifted and talented. I am pleased to note that Washington is the top-rated Iowa high school on the AP Index. Kennedy is second, and Jefferson is 19th of the top 50th. Cedar Rapids, Washington, has been the top-rated high school since 2009. So congratulations to those schools. Just a quick comment about budget. We continue to wait on the legislature to do its duty that is now about 16 months late, and they're late setting the next year's. So I appreciate all of the individuals in the community that have written legislators in support of public education funding. I do know that your message is getting there because we are being told by our representatives that they acknowledge they're being communicated with. But as of tonight, we still are waiting for what we will have in finance to work with for next year. It is my pleasure to be a guest on the new Writers Radio Podcast Program hosted by students at Roosevelt Middle School. Some of these students are from the option program that was been reported to the Board earlier, and this is their online radio station. It's up and running, and you can find it at www.writersradio.net. A great program, and as you can see, I was having some fun with the kids. They were great kids. Congratulations to Truman Elementary School on being named a Blue Zone school. This is our 10th school to achieve this wellness designation, as well as the ELSC being a Blue Zone Works Zone Site, so we're well on our way to fulfilling education's commitment to the Blue Zones Community Initiative. Many of us participated in the special 100th birthday celebrations at Arthur and Garfield Elementary Schools, as well as the 50th anniversary of Taft Middle School. These were wonderful events, provided great opportunities for students, staff, families, current and former board members, excuse me, current and former teachers to reflect on the rich history of success of each school. Congratulations to all involved. At this time, I want to introduce Paul Hayes for a student recognition.
At the request of a Board member or two, I've invited Kim Abram Bryant and Kristin Mangrich to speak with you tonight, and they are facilitators of the African American Achievement Program, which is a program that has been running in our middle schools for quite some time. So they are going to tell you a little bit about the program tonight, and have some students to share with you the benefits that they see in that programming.
First, I'd like to thank the Board for the invitation to Spotlight Triple A P., which is also the African American Achievement Program, which is formerly known as the African American Awareness Program. This is not a new program to the Cedar Rapids Schools. It was created in 2003 out of McKinley Middle School, and this program was established for two reasons. One, to help build cultural pride within a school setting, and the other was to help those academically strong African American students have exposure to more rigor. Those students were not selected to be in programs such as PACT, and so it was their way of providing that extracurricular. So 12 years later, here we are, still in the middle schools, in every middle school, all six of your middle schools. We serve anywhere from 140 to 165 students each year. So the Triple A P. program is a culturally specific program designed to give students the tools that they need for both academic and personal success. This is achieved through strengthening the students' positive self-regard, cultural identity, and enhancing their leadership skills. So students are exposed to those conversations about post-secondary education, influential African Americans within the community and nationally. They're also challenged to seek advanced placement courses when they move on to high school. Our students are involved in several activities, and each middle school is able to develop their program to the needs of their students, which is very great. That flexibility allows for the facilitators in each school to cater to the interest of their students. Our students this year have achieved many, many goals. We continue to partner with the University of Iowa for our book read, and next year will be our 10th anniversary partnering with the University of Iowa for that. The program is offered to students in grades 6 through 8. And so a student is referred to Triple A P. by three main criteria. One, they have to have a 2.5 or higher GPA. They have to have regular attendance in school, and two or less behavior referrals in a trimester. And I can say that the majority of our students have zero behavior referrals, and they all have really good attendance. We know that a 2.5 GPA is not your scholar GPA, and so what we do is we encourage those students to put more investment into their studies. We serve as mentors. We also go after those students who are at a 2.0 to encourage them to achieve the requirement GPA, the required GPA, and we also use those students that are within the program meeting those requirements, encourage them to mentor their peers as well. And so I will have Kristin Mangrich, who also assists with this program, to speak on some of the activities we do.
Some of the activities that we focus on, the first one we focus on is cultural awareness, and we do that by talking about what is your culture, and identifying that each student has a different culture within their family. So we talk about what is their culture, and then we have a cultural day. We invite parents to come in and meet with the students as well. This year, we did a food celebration, so students were able to bring in a food item that represents their culture, whether it's something that they share or they use for every family get-together, or if it's just something that they make on a regular basis. We also have taken them to All Make Me a World in the past, and that's a cultural-specific event in Des Moines, Iowa. Another one that we do is we focus a lot on academic expectations. So we talk to them about what is your GPA, why is that important, how does that affect you in high school, how does that affect you in college, and what kind of scholarships are you going to be able to get the better your GPA is. We focus on African American history and contributions. We've had presenters come into our buildings and talk to our students. Last year, we had someone come in and talk to them about what it was like during the civil rights movement. So they were able to speak to someone who went through that process and get a better understanding than just us telling them about it. I think that was really beneficial for our students. We do a lot of trivia because they like to have fun, so doing trivia with the students gets them to know what it is that they know about their culture and their history, and then they can also gain more knowledge. We watch some movies with them, just to kind of give them a variety. We talk a lot about self-esteem and what that means. So for this year, we did the book read with the University of Iowa, The Skin I'm In, and we talked a lot about what does that mean to be okay with the skin that you're in, and the color that you look like, or how you dress, or where you come from. Finally, we do a lot of college exploration. So we partner with the University of Iowa for our book read. We've partnered with Kirkwood in the past and gone and did a tour there, and this year we're starting a partnership with Mount Mercy. The partnership with Mount Mercy, we will be doing our end-of-the-year celebration there, so students will be able to go to the campus, they'll be able to visit with different college students, hopefully. And then next year, we're working on doing a mentorship with some of the sports, the athletes that are there, they'll come into our building and work with our students. Okay, this is Brianna, and she's going to talk about the program.
So my name is Brianna Range. I come from Taft Middle School. I have highly enjoyed the Taft program, that's what we call it at Taft because it makes sense. And I've been in here for two years. I started my seventh grade year, and I've learned a lot. And what Mrs. Abrams said about learning and having pride in your culture, they definitely succeeded in teaching us that. We learn how to have confidence in the skin we're in, and to embrace our culture. The role that Triple A P. has in the world and in our community, it's given us something to look forward to or see, and it's given us something we can say, yeah, we did that. And we learned that in the program that African Americans have made a huge role in the world, just as much as Mexicans or Chinese, and we really appreciate having a program like this. I highly enjoyed the people there. I've learned lots of different things about people and their backgrounds, and the friends I've made in Triple A P. has been great. The experience overall was just an amazing experience for me, and the teachers were great, too. And I learned a lot about my culture, and who I am, and my past, and hopefully my future. And I would love, I loved this program. Unfortunately, it's my last year, but it was a great program.
You can pull that mic down. My name is Wesley Jackson, and this is my first year in HAAAP, that's what we call it at Harding. And one thing I really liked about it was the field trip, because we got to sit down with the college students, and the one thing they said the most was our grades, because that's how you get into colleges. And we talked about the book, The Skin I'm In, and it talked about a kid that went through, like, tough times. She was told that she was too black and stuff, and it talks about what kids go through at they at school. And another thing we had was, like my aunt said, was we had Culture Day, and everybody brought in, like, different foods, and it showed you, like, what they ate, like, special things. And, like, every day, like, every Friday or something, they would, like, pull up our grades, and they'd look and see if we had enough grades to still be in the program.
And so where do we go from here? I mean, we've made, we've made a lot of progress in this program, and so what we're looking forward to is developing the curriculum for this program and the materials to make sure that we are more effective in our efforts, strengthening our community partnerships with local colleges, universities, and agencies, and then also to increase the number of student participants. We would love to reach that 200 mark, and then also expanding the district program to high schools. We would love that. Every year, when we send our eighth graders over to the high schools, we are bombarded in those hallways. When are we going to have Triple A P. in the high schools? I miss it. And so that's where we're looking forward to in the future. Our students brought T-shirts for you all, if they can give them to you, we truly appreciate that.
We love gifts.
And the sizes do not reflect any type of, any type of thinking of ours, we just pick them up.
Thank you very much, thank you. Can we ask a few questions?
Yes.
Great. I'm going to open up to the Board for questions.
Thank you very much.
John?
Well, I was just going to say, I've had the pleasure of directly experiencing this for probably 10 years, since you've been doing this, and it's an awesome program, and I, for one, would love to see it expand into the high schools. So as we look at this, if there's anything else that we can do as Board members to help further that, just let us know.
Thank you.
I have a question. So do you track your students once they finish eighth grade and go through high school, and report back on that metrics, if you will, and how they're doing?
We have not. In the past, what has happened, we track our students from 6th to 8th grade, and we did a pilot program, I think it was last year at Jefferson, and we turned it into more of a mentoring program, and it was very difficult to do with that same, with that type of format, the same format we use in middle school. And so we're looking for some way to try to track those students, but it would probably be easiest if we could just have the program in the high school and stay in contact with those students, but we have not yet done that.
Any other questions or comments from the Board? Yeah, Gary?
Just a comment that until you get the high school going, I believe you'd probably have some graduates out of that eighth grade program that'd be willing to come back and do some mentoring.
Yes.
Thank you for taking time out to visit us at our Board meeting and talk about this program. It's very important, and we appreciate your work, so thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Okay, next, we're going to go to Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, and I do have some requests to address the Board. And just remember, this is a time for comment to the Board, this is not a time for dialogue. I'm going to go ahead and start with Al O'Bannon. And Al, you have five minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Al O'Bannon. Just came today from a trip to Chicago to pick up our first students in our Student Enrichment Program that we are partnering with the Cedar Rapids School District with. So here today with us, I have Anya, I have Vivek, Pragnia, and Nanya. All these students are from Hyderabad, they'll be with us, and attending, first they'll attend Happy Joe's tonight for a little get-together with their shadows. We have four shadows from Cedar Rapids, Washington, that they'll be partnered with, that they'll meet this evening, and they'll start school tomorrow morning. They'll be here with us for 10 days. We already have great interest from one of the students to come back next fall and be with us for a full year. And then on Monday, we had a little delay in our Mumbai students, so they'll be here on Monday, and they'll be here for about five days with us also. So we want to thank you for your partnership and seeing this move faster than what we thought it was going to be, and not so smooth, but it's going to smooth out for us. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, I have four speakers who would like to come up together. Jan Schneider, Laura Wheeler, Cindy Fagan, and Karen Wasta. And again, state your name and address for the record, and you each have up to five minutes.
Jan Schneider, School Nurse, 3431 Riverside Drive, Cedar Rapids. Board members, I and the school nurses and health secretaries are respectfully asking that you review and reconsider the proposed elimination of the Health Services Manager position. The Health Services Department has been led by a master's-prepared Registered Nurse for 24 years, and because of this expert leadership, we have consistently been able to provide world-class health services to our students. It is absolutely imperative that our district have a full-time Health Services Nurse Manager in order to continue to provide coordinated health services for all our students in our 32 school buildings, 13 offsites, and three Metro Care Connection school-based clinics. As the District Strategic Plan states, the vision is excellence for all, and core values include safety and healthy environment and visionary leadership. To continue to assure excellence for all students, Health Services must have visionary leadership, a vision- A visionary Health Services Manager needs to be a healthcare expert who can coordinate, evaluate, and plan for continuous improvement to ensure top-quality healthcare services for all students. Although we can appreciate the great budget concerns of our district, we also are aware that some positions are deemed necessary in any organization. It is our belief that this position should be considered essential for a district of our size, which provides health planning for many students with very complex health needs in special programs and in the general education classroom as well. Eliminating the Health Services Nurse Manager position would be detrimental to the well-being of our students. Thank you.
My name is Laura Wheeler, and my address is 2325 31st Street Southwest here in Cedar Rapids. And I, too, am a school nurse and here represent all of our school nurses and health secretaries. One of our district's core values is, quote, "Focus on data and results," unquote. In the proposal to eliminate the Health Services Manager position, it seems that data may not have been considered in making the determination to eliminate this crucial position or the impact on student health and well-being. On our, in our April 30th letter to you as the board and to Dr. Benson, we detailed health service data. Health Services has provided over 90,000 direct services to students this school year alone. Last school year, we generated over $2 million in revenue for health services provided to students, and these funds are part of the special education budget. In all three of Dr. Benson's budget proposals, even the proposal which showed a positive balance, the Health Services Nurse Managing, Manager position was proposed for elimination. It is noted on the budget worksheet that the responsibilities of the Health Services Manager will be reallocated to others in the Office of Learning and Leadership. And we have the following questions we would like you to consider. First of all, how will a manager with no healthcare education, training, or experience possibly be able to lead Health Services, let alone be a visionary leader? Number two, how will that person be able to plan for continuous improvement when they have no knowledge of healthcare delivery, nursing rules and regulations, school nurse standards, the process of delegation, or individualized healthcare plans with nursing assessments, intervention, goals, and outcomes? Number three, how will they be able to answer medically-based questions or respond to medically complicated situations as they arise in our district? Number four, how will a non-nurse be able to evaluate a school nurse's performance? If the Health Services Nurse Management position is eliminated, our department would likely be the only one not led by a manager from their own profession. Teachers are led by teaching experts. Counselors are led by counseling experts. Cafeteria staff are led by food and nutrition experts. And bus drivers are led by transportation experts. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Fagan, and I'm a Cedar Rapids School Nurse also. I live at 2312 Fourth Avenue Southeast. I also have concerns about eliminating this position. If it is decided to eliminate the Nurse Manager position and divide management duties among other administrators, providing coordinated health services would be nearly impossible. It would result in healthcare services being inconsistent, and student health needs would go unmet across the district. There are nearly 16,000 health diagnoses identified in our current student population. Increasing numbers of students with health concerns, some with complex medical needs, enroll every year in our district. Most school nurses provide service to no, to more than one building with up to 2,300 students in an assignment. If added responsibilities are shifted to school nurses due to eliminating the Nurse Manager position, services we currently provide, like the Medicaid billing, would decrease due to the time commitment required, further reducing the district's budget. Our district's Metro Care Connection, Connection Clinics, which are designated as a point of pride on our district website, may fall to the wayside without appropriate leadership and oversight. A nurse Health Services Manager, because of his or her education and licensure, is uniquely able to provide elements such as vision, direction, and planning for health services policy procedures, and accountability for implementation of school health services and school-based health clinic services. This person mitigates potential district liability related to healthcare service delivery by having expertise and understanding of Iowa Board of Nursing Rules and Regulations, the Nurse Practice Act, scope and standards of school nursing, and evidence-based practice to offer guidance to school nurse practice and effectively manage potential clinical errors and health services-related questions and concerns from our stakeholders. This person provides planning and networking with community partners, including health and mental health service clinics, providers, the Iowa Department of Public Health, the Lynn County Public Health Department, and Lynn County Emergency Management. This person coordinates and collaborates with the district's Health Advisory Committee. Also, this person plans and provides for appropriate training and professional development for school nurses, our health secretaries, and our health secretary substitutes. This manager performs school nurse performance reviews and evaluations. School nurses must continue to have their performance evaluated by a Registered Nurse. Principals and other district administrators do not have the education, the background, or the licensure to evaluate clinical nursing practice. In an email sent to the nurses by Dr. Benson, in response to our concerns about eliminating this position, he stated, "Something has to be done to balance the budget. And I always believe that open positions provide an opportunity without causing anyone to lose a job or their livelihood. We respect that view. But the Health Services Manager position was posted and interviews were held in April. In the position, if it was not, excuse me, if the position was not considered important, then why was it posted and interviews conducted? The position was apparently deemed essential at the beginning of April, but by the end of April, the position was proposed for elimination. This is very concerning to us." Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here also representing the nurses. My name is Karen Wasta. I live at 3120 44th Street Northeast, Cedar Rapids. Research consistently shows that healthy students are better learners on all level of academic achievement, academic performance, education behavior, cognitive skills, and attitudes. The district's primary goal is to provide a world-class education to students, including those with health concerns. Our district cannot commit to excellence for all students without providing coordinated healthcare services. Our district constantly uses data to make decisions about improving the quality of education for our students. Health Services also uses data to make decisions about improving the quality of health services delivery in order to support our students' health and readiness to learn. If there is not a designated Health Service Manager, data would be reviewed in pieces, and cohesive planning for improvement and guiding changes in school nurse practice and service delivery would not occur. Because of the focus on using data to make decisions, it is of concern that included in each of the budget's proposals is the addition of new services and programs. Is there district data or data from other sources to support the addition of these programs and services? Because the state has underfunded education, precious dollars should be spent on support services proven to impact student well-being and achievement. In closing, we would like the board members to know that, as suggested by Dr. Ben, by Dr. Benson and members of the board, that many of the school nurses and health secretaries contacted individual state legislators, requesting that they increase the percentage of supplemental aid, state aid to fully fund education. We want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to voice our concerns, and we appreciate the difficult decisions that need to be made in order to balance the budget. We know you have the best interests of our students, and you put them first. And we trust that you will consider the information we have presented in making those decisions. We are proud and honored to work for a school health service program considered to be one of the leaders in the state and country, and we want that to continue into the future. In order to continue to provide this high level of health services to students and expect excellence for all students, we must have a nurse manager leading the Health Services Department. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you all. We appreciate your time, and, and we've, we've heard you loud and clear. Yep. Okay, next, I have a consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent that you'd like to pull? Yes, Gary?
Mary, do we have any board reports?
Oh.
If we do, I do have, I do have one.
Board reports. Please, Gary. Yes, chair.
From the Legislative, standpoint, as, as Dave said, late last week, there were, there surfaced a lot of chatter about an agreement being reached on educational funding. It has since proven not to, to, at this point, come to fruition, but they're still working on it. But when I heard about it, and I am, still, I'm very deeply upset about what that proposed agreement would be. And what they were talking about is a 1, 1.25% increase in allowable growth, but an, but an additional 55 million given in supplemental aid. But that 55 million would be one-time funding. So, it would bring it up to 2.65 or what the Senate had. Uh, and one of the reasons is that it, it, it just digs us a bigger hole for us when it's, when it doesn't add. We start next year then with that, without the, the, the additional funding. Difficult to staff, to hire staff on one-time funding. Uh, I think that if we were to move that way, it, it would mean issuing one-year contracts. We can't sustain that. And it makes it very difficult to sustain programs under that. So, I'm sure if it, if it, if it comes to be that, there will be a, a lot of applause about, oh, we've, we've given you 2.65, but they're not doing us a big favor at all. So, just pass that along and encourage the public and fellow board members and anyone else in any discussion with legislators that we at least see 2.65 if that's what it's going to be, but it'd be in sustained funding, not at one-time funding. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Gary. Any other board reports? Okay. We'll move into consent. And anyone want to pull any item for separate consideration and our discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve due to the personnel report. Second, please.
Second.
So, roll call action.
Director Ann Holt.
Aye.
Director Wester. Aye.
Director Dabery.
Aye.
Director Rosenthal.
Aye.
President Meisterlin.
Aye. Thank you. Next, I'm going to turn over to Carla Reese to talk about the Iowa Jobs for America's Graduates.
Thank you. Um, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce, from Iowa Jobs for America's Graduate, is Lori Phelan, who is the president and CEO of IJAG. And Lori's going to share some information with us about IJAG and its current programming within our district.
Thank you very much for allowing us to have a little time with you this evening. I, I drove in from Des Moines, and we're just east of the Capitol a little bit, but don't hold that against me. I'm not bringing any of that, that stuff along with me. Mary Ellen and Tara and Carla, thank you for allowing this a little bit of time. It's been about six years since IJAG has had an opportunity to come before the board here, the district. And for the past 10 years, we've had a program at Washington High School and eight years at Jefferson High School, serving over 720 young folks who are identified with a title sometimes of at-risk. But there's certainly multiberied young folks, graduating those young folks at about 94 to 95%. So, we're very impressed with the time that we've been able to be with all of you in this community, with the level of community support that we've had. So, I wanted to take a few minutes just to kind of refresh us all about what is Iowa Jobs for America's Graduates? And I guess I want to, you know, kind of think about this in terms of, we're a public-private partnership, a nonprofit, who partners with the school district to come into your, your high schools especially, we can go into the middle schools, but especially the high schools, and work with young people that need the program, can benefit from it, and voluntarily want to participate in it. And typically, those are young folks that are at risk of potentially not graduating from high school. About 79% of our young people have a high level of poverty, come from dysfunctional family homes, et cetera. And what we do is partner with the school and partner with the districts, so the administrators, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Plagman have been outstanding leaders for us across the state. In our partnership, what we do, several things. We jointly identify those students that I just spoke of. We have small committees within the school, usually with a guidance counselor, a lead administrator, a teacher, a content area teacher. We also jointly select, I'm going to keep referring to this young woman here, jointly select a specialist to work with those young folks, 40 to 50 per specialist. And then, we JAG, IJAG, we bring forth three-quarters of the total cost of the program, asking the school district to also help chip in with about a quarter of the cost on an annual basis. And if you boil this all the way down, if you looked on page 17 in the little packet that I gave you, that's our national program affiliation, we work on a primary set of competencies that most would say, look a lot like employability skills. We think they're also leadership development and competence builders, and those kinds of things that bring relevance to the learning for our young people. And as you can imagine, the, the, the students that are in our program, most of them are struggling with the rigor of our academic system because of all the other stuff in their backpacks that they bring to school. So, what we try to do in our classrooms, which are a four-credit class, that students attend on a daily basis, basis, along with math, reading, science, and everything else, we try to provide that relevant connection, as you see in those competencies, through their partnerships with continued education and businesses and community agencies throughout the city. But the biggest part is in Erin Whipple, the people that we hired, just like her, we call them a JAG specialist. They're about relationship. The thing that you, if you know Erin at all, if you don't, get to know her, she's fun on top of all this. But we hire individuals jointly that we think are super specialists. What they do is create that environment, that place that kids want to belong. They'll come to school, sometimes just for Erin. We want them to go to math, reading, and science, too, but we have to start at small steps. And we get them to come first. And then, they, what they start to do is believe that they can. It's like that little book, you know, back when I was in school, a lot of gray hair, but the little engine that, you know, I think I can. So, pretty soon, I've heard storytelling of, I think I can, those kids start to come to school. And then, guess what happens? Miracles, right? Their grades start to go up? Wow, imagine that. Their esteem starts to go up, discipline goes down. We're graduating 95% of those young people. And I'm not saying we're doing it alone, because this truly is a successful partnership that we're doing together. We just completed, Erin and the team from Washington just brought about, what, how many, 20-some students from the area to our career development conference, where they took home gold, silver, and bronze medals for their performances in those things that, those competencies that I have before you. I'm going to stop right now because I, I'm Irish, and I could talk forever, but I promised Erin that I would let her tell the story about what it takes to really make sure the program's successful from the eyes of the specialists, so.
Okay, so, what does the classroom look like? We could go on, and we could talk for hours about what the program is and, and what we do and how many kids we've helped, but what does our classroom look like? We start first by establishing a very good relationship within our actual school. So, it starts with the counseling department. It starts with the administration. It starts with the attendance facilitators. We build really good, strong relationships with them because they're going to feed us the kids that we need for the program and the right kids that we need for the program. So, the, the relationship established there. And then, our duties also as JAG specialists, we get out into the school, and we will help with attendance supervision in the hallways, to make sure hallways are clear, building relationships with students that we don't know that aren't in our program. I supervise lunchroom supervision every day. I'm down in the cafeteria, meeting new kids. I sit down, I eat lunch with the kids, I sit at the tables, I walk up to the tables and sit down and eat with them and get to know them. So, it's building a relationship for recruiting also. A big portion of that is also word of mouth. Our class-
Our classroom is designed to be more project-based learning, so we do a lot of PBL in our classroom. Everything we do is hands-on. So we are the classroom that has a lot of fun while we learn. We have really cool people come in to speak in our classrooms. We have the guys in scrubs from hospitals come in. We have military come in in the really cool uniforms and, you know, the business people with suits and ties and looking all nice. We have them come into our classroom and talk to our kids and present to our kids and get our kids involved. We also start mentorship programs with those businesses and our students to help the students actually see what it's like to be there for a day or a couple of days, for a few hours to see what it's like to hold that kind of a job. So not only are we teaching just the basic employability skills and stuff, we are showing them. We are giving them an opportunity to see what it's like and to see that it's possible for them. A majority of our kids, our first-year graduates and their family, either from high school or even to attempt college. So it's showing them what possibilities are there. She talked a lot about the little engine that could, I can, I can, I can. We get to that later. My classroom, it's you will, you will, you will. So in my classroom, when they come in, they know what their expectations are. You will attend school, you will show up, you will respond to my texts when you're not there. But also, you will know that you can come to me when things aren't going well outside of school. So we don't just work, our school day isn't like a normal teacher or an average counselor. We don't just go from the time school starts until the time it ends. We work well into the night. I can't tell you how many times I've gotten notified that I have a kid who is homeless, who is in a dangerous situation at home, or because they've gotten themselves in a dangerous situation because of the choices and the decisions they've made, which is an ongoing process and a learning process in my classroom. But we are constantly in contact, trying to eliminate and help with resources to eliminate those barriers outside of school also, so coming to school is a little bit easier. They know they've got somebody in their corner, they know they've got somebody they can trust with anything and everything that goes on in their life. So when I say you will, they do. So in our classroom, that's kind of what we focus on is basically the different options that the kids have. We work with a lot of foster care youth in our school, so we will advocate for the foster care youth, bringing them into our program and helping them, helping DHS track those students after. We also work with the juvenile detention or juvenile justice system. I have a lot of kids who are on probation, so I'm very well, I know a lot of the probation officers here in town by first name. And I also attend the juvenile task force on a regular basis, that meeting that goes on with the SROs, police officers here in town, JCO, and some of the school administration. So I attend those often also, just to keep updated on kids and things going on in the schools. So our role doesn't just start and stop with the classroom. Our role is much more advanced in order to keep the kids coming back to school.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just wow.
Yeah, I know. John?
I was just going to say, you know, as a board, this sounds terrific, and with students at Washington High School, I've seen some of what goes on, but is there anything that we as a board do feel can do to support this more in any different ways?
I would invite you all at any time to contact me at Jefferson if you would like to come into the classroom. I would love to have you come in, come in and talk to the kids. It's just understanding what you're walking into. These students are the kids who constantly have their hats on in the hallways and constantly don't necessarily like to go to every class, like Lori said. So, you know, I would invite you all to come into the classroom at some point if you want to. That's absolutely fine. Feel free to reach out to me. I am on the district website email, so, yeah. I'd also add that the continued work at the Capitol would be helpful for us, too. When the gods are smiling, we get a little bit of state funding to help offset that cost to the local districts, and it's a constant, I say I wear out a pair of knee pads every year going to the Capitol begging. So anytime you can give the advocacy report to the legislature, that's helpful for us, too. We just, we keep on them, just like you. I feel like your lobbyists are our lobbyists and doing the same thing.
Good. Good message to hear for us, too, because we will certainly include your program in our messaging. And that 95% graduation rate is incredible. Hats off to you, you for running the program and you for implementing it. So it's such an important program. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming from Des Moines to speak with us today.
We appreciate it.
And thanks for all your support. The district, you know, we're not in every school for a reason, and there has to be district-level support, community support, and you've got that here, so thanks a lot for that.
Thank you. Okay, Steve, do you want to come up and talk about the silo debt refinancing?
Yes, I do, certainly. Thank you, President Meisterling, Board of Education, Dr. Benson. This is Tim Oswald, our financial consultant with Piper Jaffray out of Des Moines, who's made the trip special to be here tonight. He is going to explain to you in simple terms a fairly complex transaction, one that will save the district millions of dollars. So Tim will tell us about that. Unfortunately, those millions of dollars that we'll be saving in our silo fund are non-transferable to the general fund. So with that, I'm going to let Tim take it away.
So this is a follow-on from February's meeting, and then you had an update on last month's agenda. And refinancing of two of your prior outstanding bond issues. And Steve is correct, there is significant savings as a result of the refinancing, and it will accrue in the silo, the Capital Projects Fund. I have a couple of things I'd like to review with you so you understand and then answer any questions that you might have. First of which, this is technically what's called, in the accounting world, this is called an advance refunding. And in an advance refunding, the borrowed money goes into an escrow account, and the escrow pays off the old bonds. In this case, the escrow will collapse in 2017 when the old bonds are prepayable and pay that bond off at that point in time. So that's, it may sound complicated, but it's a fairly standard structure in the industry. In fact, it's so standard that the U.S. Treasury sells a specific set of investments just for this purpose, and we call them slugs, for lack of a better term. But one of the problems with, and the slugs are wonderfully easy to use, and the Treasury does a great job administering it. But one of the problems when Congress gets terribly close to their debt limit is the first thing they quit doing is selling slugs. And so what was to be a fairly simple exercise becomes more complicated because now we have to go buy actual U.S. Treasuries in an open-market transaction. And our friends at the IRS give us great detail as to how we have to do that, and bid process and certifications and arms-length transactions. So, and I sat on this for a while, thinking, well, Congress will figure this out and the slug window will reopen, and by the time we get ready to come to the board, we'll be able to buy slugs and this won't be an issue. But Congress didn't, and we aren't, and so we need to applaud forward and buy U.S. Treasury securities. So tomorrow, we have scheduled a bid, an auction for the investment of the proceeds from this issue. And that's scheduled, I think it's 11:00 a.m. if I remember right. And so I don't know today what that purchase price, what that cost will be. I have a really good idea. The Treasuries are very liquid, you can monitor interest rates, they're very easy to know. So I have a really good idea of what I think they'll cost, but I don't have an exact number until tomorrow. And so the resolution that's in front of you for approval has a "not to exceed" cost in it for that very reason. We don't know exactly what the cost of the Treasuries will be, so we put a cap in it. If the cost is anything lower than the amount in the resolution, the resolution grants, I think it's the board chair and secretary to authorize the transaction and go forward. If it's higher than, if the Treasuries cost more than the resolution says, we come back to the board and don't do anything further. So now, with all of that caveat, and with the final interest rate from Regions Bank, based on where Treasury rates are today, I believe the savings over the next, let's see, 12, 13 fiscal years is $5,628,000. On a present-for-the-math geeks-in-the-room, a present-value basis, that's almost exactly $4 million. Obviously, that's a significant number, and it's about $300 or so thousand dollars higher than when we first started this discussion. That's not because of anything I've done, that's just the way the markets move. So if we were to end up at the maximum in the resolution, instead of that savings being $5,628,000, it'd be about $4,007,000. So the resolution has a window in it. Now, for perspective, and I wrote that broadly, but for perspective, I want you to understand something. Two-tenths of a percent change in interest rates in one day is a very significant change. In our market, that'd be a headline-type of change. Two-tenths of a percent change is, has an impact on savings of about $250,000. So I don't think we're talking about anywhere near that bottom number. I think we're talking about hovering around the higher number. But the resolution is written wide enough so there's some authority to move forward, so long as the bid is reasonable. So I'm going to stop for a minute and let you ask questions and give comments.
We're recommending this. In my administrative practice, we've done a lot of debt refinancing. As indicated, the savings accrue to the silo funds, which would be then available for supportive projects later.
Questions or comments from the board, Ann?
Yeah, I didn't, I guess I'm trying to find that language in our multiple-page document that's limiting.
Okay.
I guess when I saw the resolution, I didn't see it that way, so I was just trying to figure out what page I'm looking at.
I'm looking at page seven, section two, under authorization, where it has the $57,500,000 amount there to not exceed that number right there.
It's also on page 14. The paragraph begins with the words "because the market," like third paragraph down from the top.
Okay, so by that purchase price, and that's what's defining our savings?
The purchase.
Potential.
Correct. The purchase price frames the maximum cost, which then drives the size of the bond, which then calculates the savings.
Okay.
Yep.
And so then the resolution authorizing basically all these pages caps that limit.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah.
I didn't actually read every word on every page, so I appreciate that summary.
It is a lengthy document.
It's what?
A lengthy document.
Yeah, 27 pages.
This document has gone between bond counsel representing the school district and bond counsel representing Regions since Friday, in fact, maybe Thursday. Thursday, Friday, until 9:30 this morning, they had the deadline to agree to the language of the resolution. So it's been through a lot of legal oversight. And the provisions providing authority to approve the sale of, the purchase of Treasuries is actually the board president or the board treasurer. So that's also in the resolution. So the "or" is a key word. It gives you or I the authority to engage in that transaction tomorrow at 11 o'clock.
Within the defined parameters.
That's correct.
Otherwise, it comes back to the board.
Right.
And then, I guess, sorry, I have another question.
No, go ahead.
Page 115 of our board packet, not what was handed out, it's a list of the bank and the response. And I just wondered, that's, was this like a preliminary, sorry, I don't know, it's a list of about 25 banks or organizations and what the response was. And so Regions has a letter A and a 2.34%. So is that, basically, this is defining a relationship with Regions, or?
I know, Tim can add color to this. I included this in the board materials to provide the board the evidence that we looked locally and made sure that we covered our bases and asked our local bank institutions whether they were interested in participating in this private sale. This is the second time.
So pass basically means no, thank you.
That's right.
Okay.
They said, thanks, but no thanks. And Regions is the most competitive bid that Tim received from the offer.
Okay.
Okay, Gary?
What is the fee that Piper Jaffray will receive for doing this? And I would assume that since we can't get the shortcut slugs, it's going to be a little bit more costly because of the arm-length of paperwork?
Yeah, so our agreements, there's not-to-exceed language in our agreement, and Steve and I've talked quite a bit about the fee. And our fee will be six-tenths of one percent, which is shown in there, in the numbers, which I realize you may not have in front of you. So that equates to just over $300,000. There is a bidding agent fee embedded in the calculation, and I think it's $25,000 if I'm not mistaken. You know, I always struggle with, because we'll have to do a lot more work with the bid process that we, there's a process we have to run to comply with the IRS rules and all that stuff. But I always struggle with this one because here, we walk in and we say, you need to pay us more to help you bid something because somebody else who can't do their job. And so what I've talked to Steve about is that there will be a fee on one side and a corresponding reduction on the other, because I just don't think that it's right that you have to pay us more because Congress can't do their job. So we're not going to, even though there is more work, we're not going to bill it that way.
Did, will this come out of, then, the, our, what we will see as an increase in savings, then? Is that?
The net present value of $4 million includes the fee for Piper Jaffray.
Includes.
And I, I'm going to say this, and Tim may not like me saying this publicly because he's a very modest person, but I did focus in on this fee that was about $150,000 higher than what you're hearing now, because I thought, let's ask the question about the fee. And the fee has been reduced down to a more competitive rate, and I think it's a very, very fair rate that has been questioned and has been adjusted accordingly.
Thank you.
Good. Good questions. Any others? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Thank you. This is a roll call action.
Director Labberte.
Aye.
Director Rosenthal.
Aye.
Director Ann Holt.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
President Meisterling.
Aye. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Good explanation, good board material.
Appreciate it. Good job, Steve.
Yeah. We appreciate that work. Good luck tomorrow at 11:00. Next, I'm going to turn over to Dave and Laurel to talk about policy manual review and revisions.
Given the lateness of the hour, if there's questions, we're happy to answer them.
Yep. Wellness regulation. Geez, oh, Pete. Pretty tough.
Rhoda?
I mean, it's all good. Don't misunderstand me. All good stuff.
I think, you know, the recommendations that were made come to us from the District Wellness Council.
Yep.
The Wellness Policy Committee, that have been working to have our procedures and our regulations aligned really to our district goals. And the District Wellness Committee really suggested that we tighten up the language, make it a little bit stronger, and, you know, more closely aligned to what our goals are as a district, so.
No, I, we appreciate that. It's just, we look at that, I look at that, and then I look at the snack guidelines. Those are really good for our kids, but really, I think, a big change. And, you know, we grew up in the days where you baked goods and brought in candy and celebrations, and those days are long gone, and I realize that, and they probably should be. But when you read it, I haven't read it for a while, just kind of, it's right out there.
I think the big thing administratively, besides the change in some people's view of what is and isn't acceptable, is the expectation that these guidelines, this policy and regulation will be enforced uniformly. Right now, I've got a confusing situation where we have some buildings doing one thing, another building doing another, and patrons challenge that. And they ask me, why is my child here having this treatment and my child here having that treatment? And so when I went to Rhoda earlier in the year, I said, you've got to study this, you've got to bring us back a solution that we can uniformly apply across our buildings. And that's the work that she's done, and I appreciate that work, and would...
Also, thank you for your work with getting 10 schools onboard with the Blue Zones. I know that initiative is very important in the community, and for us to participate is very important as well. They can't do it without us, so we're almost there and couldn't do it without you, so thank you, Rhoda. Other comments or questions from the board? Yep, Keith?
This is a long document. When you got it on the computer screen, it's a little difficult at times to narrow it down. You know, it talks about other sponsored, school-sponsored events, and I would take that, like football games, athletic events, et cetera, et cetera. And I appreciate the word in there about "should" offer, because I think some of these events, like football games, that the hot dog and popcorn, removing that is removing part of culture. I hope we don't go down that road, you know? I mean, there's times some people need choices, and, and I must say, I've had, I just had a complaint today about the nutrition side of, of some of the kids that are in athletics just are hungry, so I'm seeing kids go over to Wendy's on 42nd like never before and other restaurants in the area, because, you know, there's some frustration there. And, 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 you know, it's kinda like the football table for the game. Some, some of these students really do use up a lot of calories, and I just think we need to look at that a little closer.
Yeah, I think we're trying to be sensitive to all those things. A, a lot of the guidance comes from the Smart Snacks regulation that's really coming from, you know, the state and the federal government, food nutrition agencies, so.
Yeah, but do we have to follow them all at times? I mean.
You know, what we have to follow is, we've, we've included in the, in the regulation, USDA rules apply during the school day, defined as the period from the midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. That's the definition they've given us. So, that's really the timeframe that, that we're addressing right now. Maybe someday we'll get to, you know, the things that happen in the evenings and on the weekends. But what we're mandated to do right now is...
So, what does the school day end mean?
I'm sorry?
What does the school day end mean? End of classes? End of show choir? What's it mean?
I think it's the end of classes.
Right.
Yeah. We could ask Susie Kettleson for more.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
I'd like to know that, because I read that, and I'm like, what does that really mean?
Right. The official school day, I think. Dismissal time.
Maybe we should word it that way, then, too.
Yeah.
End of classes, make it clearer. I don't know if we can even change it, which really bothers me.
Yep. It's a challenge.
It is a challenge. It continues to be a challenge.
We're trying to change culture. It takes a long time.
And if we can't, let's do it anyway.
Appreciate your comments, Keith, and again, thank you for the, the committee doing all the work on all of these, and, and I like that you bring these, and we keep them up to date, Laurel. I'm on other boards, and that's not always the case, so. The board will be meeting in an exempt session to discuss strategy for union and non-union employee groups for bargaining, and I'd like to go ahead and introduce our 2015 district employees who will be retiring.
Cedar Rapids Community School District is proud to recognize the career contributions of our retiring employees. The efforts of these teachers, support staff members, and administrators have enriched the lives of thousands of students and have strengthened the district and community. I am pleased to congratulate them on their accomplished careers and to thank them for their dedicated years of service.
Nancy Hayes has served as the Erskine Elementary School Counselor for eight years. We wish her well in retirement and thank her for her service and support to the Erskine School community.
I am going to miss the energy of the kids. The smiles, the hugs, the laughter, and even your excuses. I'm going to miss having my birthdays at school. Do you know why? Because elementary kids have the best birthdays ever, and they think my birthdays are awesome, too, and I will miss having my birthdays here. I will also miss my principal, because she has been my favorite person to ever work with. The time to listen to the kids. They say some extraordinary things if we just take the time to listen. Helping them get coping skills, helping them feel good about themselves, and helping them to respect others and also be respected. I am moving to California, and I have a new grandson that's coming the end of May, and I'm going to be family out there. I'm getting a dog, and I am going to enjoy the warm weather and doing what I want to when I want to.
Rhoda Shepherd joined the district in 1989 as a school nurse assigned to Harding, Franklin, Nixon, and Kenwood Schools. Later, as Health Services Manager, she helped to launch the Metro Care Connection, our school-based health services program. As Director of Student Services, she has continued to lead the district's school health program and to promote wellness efforts, including the Blue Zones Initiative. We thank Rhoda for her 26 years of service and congratulate her on her retirement.
I think what I will miss most is all the wonderful people that I've had a chance to come to know and to work with over all these years. Our school nurses, our health secretaries, our learning supports people, our Metro Care Connection staff. I think the best part of my job has been just having been able to work together with people, to collaborate with so many different people, just to develop programs and systems of support for our students, so that they can come to school and be ready to learn and hopefully be successful. I am really looking forward to just having time, time to spend with our family and with our friends. We have five grandchildren. Three of them are one-year-olds, and two of the one-year-olds live in Chicago, so it's gonna be really great to just be able to go and visit them, but also looking forward to just traveling and exploring, you know, having adventures with my husband, then just pursuing other interests, maybe even discovering a hobby. Haven't had time for a lot of those things, and now I will have it and really look forward to it.
Dr. Dave Benson is closing the books on a 43-year career as an educator. He has served as district superintendent since 2009. In addition to Iowa, his career has included school districts in Kansas and Missouri. We thank Dr. Benson for his leadership, and we congratulate him on his outstanding career of more than four decades.
Over 43 years, I've directly influenced, through being a teacher, administrator, over 350,000 student years of educational opportunities. The best part of my job is getting to work with great people. I mean, we have a, a really highly-trained and motivated workforce. I hope my legacy is the hires, the people that I've participated in putting in administrative jobs and in supervisory positions. I hope that legacy lives on through their good work. The leadership team that has been put together here is outstanding. Well, of course, I'm gonna miss the people that I work with. This is fundamentally a people business, and it's a relationships that work between the people, so I'll miss that. But beyond that, the, the reality is, the superintendency is a job where you never know what's gonna happen, and you can, from day to day, make decisions that impact not just today and tomorrow, but well into the future, and that challenge of the position, I'll miss that. We're kinda lake people, so we like to be around the water, and I'll enjoy winter mornings, not having to get up at 5:00, and basically enjoy family time and, and being out of the pressure.
I think you forgot to say that you were gonna miss the best board you've ever worked with.
Best board I've ever worked with. Perfect.
That was very nice. You're both gonna be missed very much. Okay, so, no further business before this board, we stand adjourned. Thank you.